Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the State Council meeting for June 16th, 2014. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin. Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley. Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vera.
Present.
Please stand for invocation. Bishop Colburn.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for another City Council meeting. We thank you for all your blessings. Never get tired of coming here asking you to bless our city, bless our mayor, bless all of them, bless everyone that's in charge. You said in the Word, "Praise for those that are in authority." In Jesus' name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Amen.
Let me introduce you to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in judicial liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's comments, very brief. The United States beat Ghana two to one in the World Cup. So that's my comments. Audience time. Agenda items only. There's no and none. Minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of June 2nd, 2014, regular minutes and special meeting minutes of June 9th, 2014. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Velco. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Committee reports. Finance, Alderman Newsom, please.
Thank you. Is this mic on? Needs to be turned up. Testing, testing. Okay. Item A, authorizing disbursement of $126,278.78 to fund the 2014 Budget Cash Call Part One for expenditures related to the Yeoman Creek Superfund Site remedial action payable to YCRG Trust care of Ordway Law Firm IOTA account. Budget code 100-712924636, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vera.
Aye.
Item B, authorizing use of Series 2012 Water and Sewer Revenue Bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Cummins Power Generation for the purchase of water system baseline improvements, specifically a power generator for the water plant, in the amount not to exceed $1,272,000. Budget code 555-916027018, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vera.
Aye.
Item C, authorizing the city collector to write off bad water billing debt in the amount of $25,094.84. And they will, the collection agency will continue to go after this bad debt. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vera.
Before I vote aye, were there any liens or with foreclosures involved with this as far as?
Mr. Torres?
No. Just strictly bad debt.
Just water.
Just strictly bad debt. Thank you. I vote aye.
Thank you. Item D, motion authorizing the city collector to enter into a three-year agreement with Aptio Solutions LLC for electronic check recovery and collection services, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vera.
Aye.
Item E, authorizing the city treasurer to renew a letter of credit by First Midwest Bank to satisfy U.S. EPA financial assurance requirements for the Yeoman Creek Landfill Superfund Site at a cost of $25,000, and I so move.
Madam Chairman? Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Is this on?
Yeah, it's on.
Can you hear? Okay. The date of renewal is July 18th. We do not have another finance and city council meeting before that. The new environmental attorney asked us to hold off as long as we could because he's hoping for some relief in one of three areas. Our liability responsibility is now below the $2.4 million. We should get some reduction there. The OMC Fund, which has about $800,000 or $900,000, has not been released. That could be released to all of them. We would be getting 35 percent of that toward the cash calls, as you see, $126 for six months. And the city's finances have improved and we've asked for relief in that area that we should not be required to have the letter of credit. That's my report. Any questions? Madam Chairman?
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vera.
Aye.
Thank you, Alderman. Insurance Committee, Alderman Cunningham.
Item A, authorizing property officials to solicit bids for 2014-15 water main replacement program, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Item B, motion to recommend the City Council authorize proper city officials to solicit bids for repairs to the storeroom sewer system between Metropolitan Avenue and Butcher Street and Grand Avenue and Brookside Avenue, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Item C, Alderman Newsom covered in her case, so we'll go right to item D. Motion to recommend the City Council authorize proper city officials to solicit bids for replacement of approximately 20 water valves in the area between Brookside, Grand, McCary, and Lewis Avenue, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item E, motion to recommend the City Council authorize proper city officials to solicit bids for replacement of approximately 20 water valves in the area between Brookside, Grand, McCary, and Lewis Avenue, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Item C, Alderman Newsom covered in her case, so we'll go right to item D. Motion to recommend the City Council authorize proper city officials to draft specifications and advertise their bids for removal and disposal of dead and dying ash trees. I thought that maybe we could get an idea. We're not going to get to all the ones that need to come down, not with only the one crew we have. So we're going to see how much it will cost, get a price, and see how much it will cost to take down, you know, a tree or a bunch of trees for solicit bids, and we'll go from there. If we can afford it, we can afford it, we'll take down more. If we can't, we can't, just to see how much it's going to cost. I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Item G, oh, sorry, item G. Yes. Motion to recommend the City Council authorize proper city officials to seek three bid for the emergency repairs to the road, sanitary force, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item H, motion to recommend the City Council authorize proper city officials to enter into a contract for 2014 water main replacement of West Waukegan with a low qualified bidder, Manito Construction, and I so move. Two hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-three cents at the base bid, and I so move. One funds for this project are billed 555-916027043, of the current year budget, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vera.
Aye.
Motion, item F, motion to recommend the City Council authorize proper city officials to draft specifications and advertise their bids for removal and disposal of dead and dying ash trees. I thought that maybe we could get an idea. We're not going to get to all the ones that need to come down, not with only the one crew we have. So we're going to see how much it will cost, get a price, and see how much it will cost to take down, you know, a tree or a bunch of trees for solicit bids, and we'll go from there. If we can afford it, we can afford it, we'll take down more. If we can't, we can't, just to see how much it's going to cost. I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Item G, oh, sorry, item G. Yes. Motion to recommend the City Council authorize proper city officials to seek three bid for the emergency repairs to the road, sanitary force, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item H, motion to recommend the City Council authorize proper city officials to enter into a contract for 2014 water main replacement of West Waukegan with a low qualified bidder, Manito Construction, and I so move. Two hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-three cents at the base bid, and I so move. One funds for this project are billed 555-916027043, of the current year budget, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vera.
Aye.
Thank you, Alderman Moizio. Public Safety, Alderman Conkin. Not present. Alderman Beadley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, Public Safety Committee recommends and I so move that proper city officials be authorized to enter into a two-year agreement with the sole source provider, best technology systems, for the cleaning and maintenance of a bullet trap area and ventilation system of the range at a cost of $14,105 for the first year and $9,130 for the second year, and also to enter into a two-year agreement with the sole source provider, Megat Training Systems, for cleaning and maintenance of the hardware in the range at a cost of $1,790 per year. Funding for these services is available from the Federal Asset Orphanage Fund, 296-629-624438.
Motion by Alderman Beadley, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vera.
Aye.
Item B, the Waukegan Police Department respectfully requests authorization to purchase upgrades to the in-station video surveillance system from the sole source provider, Inter Pacific Incorporated, for a cost of $22,489.67. The current video system is partially digital, and video storage is 45 days. The state of Illinois requires 90 days of archived video. Funds for this purchase are available from the Narcotics Asset Orphanage Fund, 296-629-626495.
Motion by Alderman Beadley, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vera.
Aye.
Item C, the Public Safety Committee recommends and I so move that the proper city officials be authorized to purchase up to five covert surveillance cameras with Team Intel intelligence under GSA Contract Number GS07F5981R at a cost of $10,711.62 per camera. Funds for this purchase are available from the Narcotics Asset Orphanage Fund, 295-629-526494.
A motion by Alderman Beadley, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vera.
Aye.
The Public Safety Committee recommends and I so move that the proper city officials be authorized to weigh the bid procedure and accept the lowest of three quotes from Nielsen Enterprises, purchase one altering utility vehicle, and associated accessories for an amount of $10,485. This purchase will be made from the Shawna Fund, 292-629-226493.
Motion by Alderman Beadley, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vera.
Aye.
Item E, 2014 J. Grant. The Waukegan Police Department has accepted the 2014. The Public Safety Committee recommends and I so move that the proper city officials be authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the County of Lake and the City of Zion in order to complete the 2014 Burn Justice Assistance Grant process awarding a total of $44,612, with the City of Waukegan receiving $28,928, the City of Zion receiving $8,666, and the County of Lake, Lake County State's Attorney's Office receiving $7,648.
Motion by Alderman Beadley, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vera.
Aye.
Thank you, Alderman Beadley. There is no old business, reports and communications, or is none. New business recommended action by Corporation Council. Item A, approval payroll dated June 13th, 2014, in the amount of $1,396,269.61. Final payouts in the amount of $33,235.16. Vacation cash out in the amount of $10,465.32. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vera.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated June 16th, 2014, in the amount of $1,468,305.5. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vera.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated June 16th, 2014, in the amount of $1,468,305.5. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vera.
Aye.
Item B, authorizing use of City Parking Lot at the South West corner of Clayton Street and Sheridan Road Parking Lot D for a block party sponsored by Waukegan Main Street and the City of Waukegan Chamber of Commerce on July 18th, 2014, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., correction, until 10:00 p.m., as previously approved by the City of Waukegan Outdoor Special Event Board. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beadley. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are no ordinances and resolutions. Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Yeah, I recently talked about sagging of pants and creating ordinance to someone who controlled the issue. Well, all the things that we talked about on this council floor, there's been a lot of comments, some positive, some negative, I think some just constructive criticism or concerns as to what it might can and cannot happen. I did some research on my own and found out that this sagging, I'm sorry, the word sagging, the pants below the butt, I still consider that to be two separate issues. Pants below the butt, its origin, it's from prison wear. And it was meant for if you were in prison, and your pants below your butt, I don't know how to properly say this in this fashion, but it does mean something a little bit different than what most people think it is. I would strongly suggest to young men, and even young women, if you wear them, you should look what it really means. It does not mean to be, it's a fascist thing. It means that you were, I don't know how to pronounce it. Available. And it's crazy. It means you're available, for whatever, available for whatever within that setting. I'm trying to be funny, I just didn't believe that it existed. And it's a fascist thing before a young man, a young woman. Well, that was the first thing that took me by surprise. And the second thing that took me by surprise, that I was harshly criticized by someone who I've been knowing my entire lifetime, Hassan Hakim, who suggested that I not bring this issue up because there's more important issues to bring up in the city of Waukegan. And I agree with him. There are more important issues. However, because of like interactives within that county jail, and I see so many young men come in there, and they often seem to, those who were out in the world doing what they were doing, they had the baggy pants. So that's a correlation. I figure if we stop, or we can bring some understanding to the baggy pants, a correlation to not being successful, then it meant something. Well, I got some pretty good feedback. One, and I believe this, it is not a legislation, or it's not up to the legislators of our community to really put this issue, to force young men, and now young women, to wear their pants, you know, above their butt, you know, with a belt on, and look presentable. It is the parents. And that's right. When you leave the household, your mom, or your dad, your grandma, whomever is there, those should be the person who tell you, unfortunately, this has not happened. This has not happened. So as opposed to going bickering back and forth and saying, you were right, and I'm right, let's do this. Why don't we get a meeting, town hall meeting if you want to call it, a get together, pow wow, a dialogue, whatever it may be, and let's sit down and get a better understanding. Because one thing I do need to clear up, I'm not, I don't want anybody ever to think that being available is what this means. And I think they is, whoever don't know, because they really don't know, should understand that it does not get you into a job interview. It does not get you into a college interview. It does not get you to people looking at you, taking you, it just don't. So I am challenging Mr. Hassan Hakim, myself, some of our police officers, young teens, anybody on the council floor. It might not be a big issue to everyone, but it's an issue to me. Because I see how, I see how our young men and young ladies are not viewed because of how they wear, you know, their clothing. It is what it is. I mean, we can't change it. But I'm calling you out now. I'm available for a date to sit down and talk about, and let's get this out in the open. So you don't attack me, and I don't try to come and attack you. It is just, I think a better understanding when you know something, or something about something. It could be just, hey, I'm 13, 14 years old, that's the way I want to dress, that's fine. But these are the consequences of dressing like that. So that's my, that is my comments of the day. I did receive some great feedback, and most of them were, a lot of our senior citizens, they just flat out don't like you. They gave you their opinion on it, and it is what it is. But I do believe that our young men and our young ladies must truly understand what this will mean for them and their future. And that's where, that's the position I take, and I stand with you.
Mostly all I do is sit over there and call the police when need be. Who really did the heavy lifting and I really am grateful for, and so far, so good this year. I noticed a dramatic change there. The real credit goes to Ann Lynn, our city attorney, who contacted the building owner and the building owner's attorney, and Chief Wallace and the Waukegan Police Department, and I'd have to give some credit to the building manager as well. Like I said, I like to watch things and pay attention, especially later at night. Call the police a lot, but those are the people that really deserve the credit for that. As far as mosquitoes are concerned, this is our mosquito, real shit. Real heavy on a lot of words like sustainability and green, social responsibility, very light on information on hydridoids and other substances they use. If you go on their website, Clark Mosquito, you can read it for yourself. You have to really go on the internet and type in Anvil and a couple of the other items are, they use, and you get differing opinions on what these things affect, but they do affect bees. Don't see a lot of honeybees around anymore, but I don't know, when I grew up, and I've said this before, we used to go out, play hide and go seek tag around my house and four or five of the neighbors' homes, get bitten unmercifully by the mosquitoes. Very bad, the next night, you'd be all, but you know, once the mosquitoes start getting really bad as the night went on, you naturally went inside. Like I said, I think instead of spraying an entire community, I don't, I don't have air conditioning in my home and my car isn't air conditioned anymore, this has been worked in three years, but I learned to acclimate with the seasons, and it's a little disturbing to get woken up in the middle of the night and hear this thing, the gas motor spraying out mosquito repellent, and my windows are wide open, or might have a box stand in my window blowing over me to keep me cool on very hot nights, and that stuff blows right over me. I think they missed calling me last year, they're supposed to call and notify when they're going to be spraying. I don't believe I got a call last year, but I don't know, I think it's a little excessive, go a little overboard. If you look up West Nile virus, apparently that doesn't affect everyone and actually affects very few people. Once again, you know, we're spraying every, I think, we need to toughen up a little bit, perhaps look at what we're spraying around in our communities and what effect that has on our wildlife and everyone who lives in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I've received several calls regarding, I guess this would be to the chief of police, regarding people driving, holding their phones in their hands. Are we giving tickets or writing tickets for those? I just rolled past someone today, hand, phone in their hand, and they're talking. I know we probably can't make a citizens arrest case made like that, but are we writing tickets for those? Are we catching people, or what is the status of that?
Yes, ma'am, we're writing, we're writing them to catch them, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Of course, I gotta say, it's extremely common, so if we catch them, we're writing them.
Okay. All right, that would be my. Alderman Tempest?
I just want to comment on citizens of Waukegan having block parties. I think it's a real united force in bringing our communities together, and we as aldermen need to continue to encourage the different blocks to have block parties and give them all the support that we can. And that's all I have to say this evening, your honor. Thank you.
Alderman May?
Thank you. I just want to bring to everyone's attention that on July 18, the Waukegan Main Street and the Waukegan, City of Waukegan Chamber of Commerce were co-hosting the Criterion Bike Race and Block Party. From 11 o'clock in the morning, the bike races will start and they'll go until 8 o'clock at night. They'll go around Genesee and Sheridan Road, Clayton and Water. It's a big event that's been held in our, in surrounding communities over the years. We got the opportunity this year, so we decided to go for it and try something, a new kind of event in Waukegan. So I hope everyone will mark, mark their calendars and come out and check out this cool new event in the city of Waukegan. That'll be July 18. I also just want to mention and congratulate the South Genesee Merchants Block Group, who had a block party this weekend. Alderman Cunningham and I were there, it's in his ward. It's a group of neighbors, building owners, business owners down on South Genesee Street. They've banded together, they've been meeting monthly, and they're just, they hosted a ravine cleanup, and then this weekend they did a block party, and I just want to commend them. It's like neighborhood branding. You hear about neighborhoods in, you know, in Chicago, Andersonville or Wrigleyville, and I just think that it's a really great example of the community taking charge of their own neighborhood and trying to do some branding and just bringing more activity to our downtown area. So Bravo, it was a wonderful event, and I just, the business owners, the building owners all got together, I just really want to commend them for doing that. Also on Saturday was the opening of the Terrace at Cyber Place. I haven't been able to get down there yet, but I know many of you up here have. I hear it's a great outdoor patio, entertainment, great food, the pictures looked wonderful. And also on Saturday was a concert at Steiner Pavilion. So there was way too much, you couldn't do it all on Saturday, and I just want to thank everyone who's involved in bringing all this activity to Waukegan. And that's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Velco?
I'll take a pass tonight, thank you.
Alderman Rivera?
I'll be quick. I'd like to thank the Fire Department a couple Fridays ago, the neighbor behind me, their tool shed caught on fire and burned down, and it did some damage to my garage, and when the Fire Department, to the back of my garage, when the Fire Department arrived, they, they also not only arrived at the scene where the fire was at, but they also came to my house too as well. And my wife was a little shook up about it because she didn't know that that was happening, and, and she didn't get the fireman's name, chief, that really calmed her down and, and put his arm around her, and it was awesome. So I just want to let, if you can let that fireman know that I appreciate what he did in calming the situ, calming her down at least. So I appreciate that very much. I also like to thank Chief Commander Ford and Officer Brielle, my, my officer in the ninth ward for the Neighborhood Watch meeting out in Pleasant, Pleasant Hill. It was successful, I appreciate that very much. And also I want to thank the mayor and also Tina and myself for meeting with one of my constituents out there and, you know, we had a meeting, talking about property taxes, and I'm quite sure that everyone has, has had that, had that call, but we met here and explained to her, it was a very informational meeting. You know, a lot of the constituents, really, sometimes they don't realize what, what goes on, what we do and what we try to do as far as, you know, you know, the taxing and the tax bill itself and how it's read. So it was very, a very informational meeting, so I want to thank everyone on that. So that's it.
I have one, I have one comment. Scoop will be coming back to Waukegan July 11th and 12th. Friday night is open scoop, you're allowed to scoop at no cost to you. Bring your car, scoop like we used to do way back when. Saturday night is a, is there a fee to scoop? Scoop will be, there will be nine vans, live vans, three stages, 400 classic vehicles, and the city of Waukegan has invested no money in this event, is all sponsored by corporations and individuals, so the taxpayers can rest assured, you'll have a good time at no cost to us. With that being said, I'd like a motion by Alderman Velco, second by, oh, I'm sorry, audience, audience time. Jane Ferry? Sorry, Jane.
My name is Jane Ferry, 531 Leith Avenue, and executive director of Waukegan Main Street, and I want to just point out, Alderman May told you all the things that went on last weekend, and this weekend is going to be busy too, and we are taking advantage of the summer after eight or nine months of really, really cold weather. So get out and enjoy. This weekend is Art Walk, the five to nine in the Arts and Entertainment District in downtown Waukegan, but it's also the Chicago to Waukegan Sailboat Race and Party, which everyone is invited to down by the yacht club and the pier. So that should be a lot of fun, and while you're down there, do check out the Terrace at Cyber Place. It's very nice, very upscale, very fun, very open and very welcoming, so it's a nice add to our downtown and to our lakefront, so please enjoy it yourself so that you can tell other people what's going on with it. And the only other thing that I really wanted to mention was that the Independence Day Parade is coming up sooner rather than later. It's going to be Sunday, the 29th, starting at 1 o'clock, kicking off right here at the corner of Grand and Sheridan. It's always a good time, it's going to end up in Bowen Park with a lot of festivities, so please mark your calendar and come on out if you're not part of the parade, please enjoy watching it or participating in it. And always, as always, check out our calendar at waukeganmainstreet.org, or if you have questions, comments, suggestions, concerns, please feel free to call me at 847-623-6650. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Ladies and gentlemen, for all intents and purposes, the council meeting is over. We're going to go executive session after executive session, and we'll come out and adjourn the meeting. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Moiseo, to go into executive session, discuss matters of land acquisition, real estate purchases. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Roll call please, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Nusa.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
President.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
President.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Cunningham to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.